Welcome everybody into another backtesting session. As you can see, we're starting from August 22nd and we're going to close off August and start probably also September. So this week, we don't have anything important on Monday. On Tuesday, we have S&amp;P Composite Manufacturing Services PMI from the S&amp;P and yeah, also conferences for the Eurozone. On Wednesday, we have the doable good orders coming up. On Thursday, we have the PCE and the GDP as well as jobless claims. Also, we have started the Jackson Hole Symposium, so I think we will have a press conference soon. PCE coming on Friday as well. And then, as you can see, at 10 AM, we have the Jackson Hole Symposium and the press conference after that from the Fed. Minimum sma sentiment coming in at 4, we use the 10 AM candle. Symposium continuing on Saturday and let's see if we have the next week, the proper press conference. Also confidence. And let's see, ADP. And then we are, okay, we're going to have the September NFP. Okay. So no actual press conference apart from the one of the first Thursday. Of, of Wednesday, actually. No, okay, Friday. So let's see what is going to happen. So, so far, let's see, it's going to be a full week. Markets will be waiting for the, any news from the Fed. But let's have a look at every day what the market is telling us with the price action. So, as you can see, we are coming early into, this is New York open. So far, we have these lows and we have these highs. Okay, as we see, they are being respected. We can take any sell below here. Okay, in this case, that would be a loss. Now, let's see if we have a correction on the upside. So we have it, but we don't have any retest of our PSAs that, uh, that I, as I wanted. Even this is not really retesting these highs. So there wasn't really any chance of entering unless I am entering over here. And that might be it. But let's see if we break above these highs. Or we have a retest of these lows as well. So, waiting for this price action to break will end up being a second loss. Price is now then breaking below these last lows. I would want the retest of these lows, instead price is simply staying below here. There's no entry over here, there's an entry over here, but I would have probably waited for the retest of these lows. And yeah, they were coming at the 10 AM candle, so after all this price action, let's see, the 10 AM volume, what is going to bring us to the table? Okay. So, uh, that was the price action coming into 10 AM. So we have these lows over here, we have these possible highs, these last highs and any further, um, passivity area that is going to form. So this is very weak, I will, probably would not even consider these buys. And let's see if we have a retest of these highs. Or this one as well, so this could be the possible trade idea. Coming into a further, further loss. Retrieval, let's see now if we have a further break and retest coming into late London, late New York session. Yeah, no real further trade ideas. So unlucky that we missed, uh, this entry, for example, because we were waiting for, um, okay, we're waiting for a fuller retest of these lows. Instead, I, I don't know if I would have entered, probably, I don't know. But yeah, that would have been the trade idea for the day, for the winning trade of the day. So now let's continue with the next day. Okay, 23rd of August. We have, we said, we have the PMIs coming in later, which will bring some volatility. Okay, this is New York open. What do we have as a possible reference? We have these highs. And let's see if we create some market structure for the continuation lower. Yeah, yeah, for example, like here. Okay, not, not working. Not even retesting these lows, possible highs. Yeah, we might take the highest high world buys over here. Okay, yeah, it's finally pushing, very good. And we're coming at the PMIs. So this one is actually a winning trade, first of the week. We would have also had further opportunities, safest buys, above these highs and above these highs, one, two, one, two. So we get our TP it over here. And the PMIs are showing, uh, decrease, decrease, decrease. So all quite bad data for the US dollar. So we might see continuation bullish. Yes, we have this retest of these lows, but mainly we are going to, to watch it, uh, on the next chart. Okay, so we have, as we said, we have this PSA, we have this PSA. Okay, we might take this possible trade idea. And that's a winning trade. Okay, possible continuation up over here. Otherwise, breaks out above these highs. Okay, yeah, winning trade. Now we have these highs and we are creating these lows for possible, uh, correction of the moment. Yeah, for example, this entry could be. Yes, one, two, three, four. So that would be further win and that's absolutely great. Also retesting the key level, now we are breaking down below. We have this last low to take into consideration, but also these highs, possible price can possibly break above. It's getting late, so I don't know if I will take the entry anyway. This is looking good. Yeah, but it's, uh, unlucky and gets stopped out. Okay, and yeah, that's, that's it for the day. So let's continue. So now we are on the 24th of August, Wednesday, and we have the doable good orders coming in at 8:30 AM. This is 2 to 10 to 20. Yeah, this is probably the release of the data, which is coming much worse than expected and much, much worse than prior and worse than expected. The X defense and excluded defense in this transportation is increasing. Non-defence is increasing, more than expected, but still lower than prior. And yeah, I want to see the market reaction because so far it looks like a mixed data. Okay, yeah, we got the retest of these lows. Yeah, and it's a loss. Not much of a volume. This might be possible push down. The price is not trending, so this could easily bounce from this level again. Yes, so in this case, it's absolutely nonsense to stay in a trade. There's no volume, there's no, mm, direction, so I'm simply hoping that the price will push up anyway. Uh, yeah, let's see now if with the 10 AM candle, we can see some more push. We can also take this exactly trade idea. Price is now breaking, retesting these lows. Yeah. Absolutely, it will go into profits, but, uh, after taking us out because the price is so choppy. So that's, that's a loss. Uh, we still have the, the last hour of the session. Okay. So we had this one, as you can see, this one was actually the best entry because now the price is actually trending and we could have taken, we could take actually this trade because we got stopped out over here. And yeah. Basically, at the London close, it goes into a winning trade. And that's great. Further breakout and retest. If you enter over here, that would be a read. Very good, so let's continue with the Thursday. So on Thursday, the 25th, and we have quite a bit of, uh, of a report, GDP, PCE, jobless claims. So, okay, so this is the data release. GDP is better than expected. The PC is basically the same. Yeah, staying the same. Uh, so it's could, it could push down for gold due to the strength of the dollar, but I want to see the price action coming in because there's not, it's not showing a strong volume. So I would want to see, uh, some clear direction. The price is simply bouncing up and down. Okay, now we are breaking down below these lows. We might possibly have this trade idea playing out. We're still in the range, but yeah, yeah, this is actually a win. Slowly, but going into profits. Okay, we're now, we can retest and yeah, even enter over here will be okay. Not really sure if, uh, no, that should be like 10 pips, but that is also a loss. Okay, price now is staying above these highs. So we can see a possible correction on the upside, even though it's just a simple spike. Uh, yeah, we might still see it. Okay, now price is staying above, yeah, I don't like the price action. Probably this is a breakeven trade. I will leave it as breakeven. And let's, yeah, let's get into Friday. So Friday, we had PCE coming in decreasing. Yeah, decreasing quite a lot. I think that will push gold up because of the expected, um, possible, uh, what's the word, dovish talk from the Fed. Yeah, as you can see, this is the data release. Over here, we had a break, break a retest of these highs. Now I would want to see a retest of this area to push up. It's kind of closing, so low, we are actually retesting these lows, which was nice. We're possibly entering over here. Yeah, which would be a loss anyway. Now, if the price action is retesting these lows, we might see the correction down. And now, I will, I will take the, the, the price action bullish, yeah. Break a retest, break a retest. Let's see if we have a retest of these highs. We have it. Not sure if this will be a win or a loss, I would have to check it. But let's see if also the price stays bullish or anyway goes down, yeah, goes down anyway. Also, yeah, we had, uh, power speaking now, so we don't really know what the talk was. Let's see if simply per price action, we have some possible trade ideas. And for example, testing these lows. Yeah, not really, testing these lows. Yeah, no, we don't have the, the, the Powell, uh, commentary. So, I mean, we could have taken this one and then won this one, break a retest. Yeah, without the, the speech, it's quite difficult to, to see it. Now, let's see, we want to see the last hour of Friday. Okay, so we added this, then we had this correction. So, so far, we will be looking above these highs or now that we are creating some market structure below these lows. So yeah, breaking down below, we might take these high risk high world sells, which will go into profits. Uh, one, two, okay, taking the, the profit over there. Then we have these lows that might be retested and the continuation down. Yeah, so as you can see, enter over here or enter over here would be profitable. Took loss of the week. Also, as you can see, retesting these lows, it's absolutely amazing, then, then, and then continuation down. But of course, for us, it's too late, it's after London close. So now, I think we are already moving into next Monday. Okay, Monday 29th of August, and, uh, we don't have anything. I spare, uh, fundamental reports. Yeah, we have now this price action, this possible retest and continuation up. Okay, for example, any entry, I will say over here. Okay, yeah, and that would be a profitable entry. Okay, we are seeing continuation up, for example, above these highs. As you can see. Okay. I think that's going to be a win, but, uh, we're going to check it later. Um, hmm. Yeah, so where was the, the trade idea was here? Yeah, that's already a win. Okay, now we have this strong PSA. And we have a fuller retest, yeah, that's nice. Possible retest over here. Okay, yeah, and then it pushes up. Very good. Okay, now the price is declining, not a lot of volume, it's a Monday. Yeah, I don't really care about it, about taking entries. Let's continue with Tuesday. Tuesday, the 30th of August. Okay, what do we have anything? Sorry, I have a consumer confidence at 4, jobs, uh, jobs, job openings at 4 as well. Uh, so let's see, let's start with the session. So far, the price is ranging, we are now possibly staying below these lows. For first one, first trade idea. Okay, which will end up being only like 20 pips and then result in a loss. Okay, let's see if we break above or we have the continuation down. Low, these lows especially. Possible high risk high world entry over here. Still loss, so the jobs opening are very good. I don't have idea of the consumer confidence, but let's see the market reaction at it. If we break below these lows and retest them, then I will take the sells. Even this is a retest of the last low. Okay, yes, and we are good to go. Okay. Now, one, two, three, four. We are also having possible retest of these lows, but the continuation down. Yes. As I was saying. Continuation, retest of these lows for this continuation sells. So now we are at the end of August, last day of August, it's a Wednesday. We don't have much, we have the ATP actually, very early, because on Friday, we are going to have the, uh, NFP. Also, for June, June 2, August, okay. So it was good, bad, bad. So we can see how it is, uh, it's actually very bad on the last one. So I'm expecting a bullish push on gold. Let's see if we have break above these highs or these lows. Yeah, we're having a retest of these lows. Okay, but it will end up being a loss. This was the retest of the last lows. That's where we would possibly want to have the best entry, over here. Yeah, wow, such a low volume. I have to wait for the New York Stock Exchange opening to possibly, if we were in this trade, to possibly give, uh, get it profitable. We have to wait more than one hour, one, two, three. Let's see if it actually pushes down, yeah. Let's see now if we have a break and retest on the upside, yeah. Entry would be sketchy because there is no actual retest. We are retesting this last candle. I don't know if I would be able to enter over there. Yeah, then we have the retest of this last high. And key level for a win. Very sketchy price action, I would say. Uh, due to the NFP, the ADP, but it's also the end of the month. And now we are coming into the beginning of September. Now, it's actually the last part of this day. Uh, do we have any further trade idea? We have these highs, but we are in this trade yet. Okay, so one, two, three, four. So we get our TP over here. We break out and we retest these highs, that's possible further buy entry. Let's see if there is enough volume, yeah, no. So this is actually a loss. And, uh, okay, now, but it's breaking above, yeah, now it's, uh, nothing much. Nothing really happening. And now, for real, let's start from the beginning of September. We have on a Thursday. And remember that the next day, we are going to have the NFP. So the big day, the main event will be tomorrow. So far, we have these highs, these lows, lowest lows. And this, let's see with the actual news of the jobless claims. Thursday, okay, jobless claims are coming in improved compared to previous one. But, yeah, improved compared to previous one. I will also have the, uh, PMI at the 10 AM candle. So we have a breakout, a break and retest below these lows. We saw that the jobless claims are good, so we might take any entry, one of two, or two. It's very risky because the price just failed to break above below, but yeah, that's not in our It's very risky, because the price just failed to break above below, but yeah, that's not in our uh control. So that's the only controller we have is where and when to enter. So that's, okay, that's great. And um yeah, we possibly have the retest of these lows. This could be end of pullback entry. I don't really like it to, to take anymore, yeah. And also want to do that, but uh I don't really like to take that, those anymore. Uh based more on the uh break and retest pattern, so. I would love to take now the, the break below these last lows. Okay, yeah, also you can see this one was quite nice, but okay. Let's see if it gives us a break and retest, yeah, like that one. And then a continuation down. Okay, one, two, three, a little bit more, a little push. Okay, so uh I'm not sure if that will be a win. It will go into a win, but yeah, hmm quite sketch, I would say, I think it's actually a loss. Uh I'm going to check it on the broker now. If the entry was at this retest, I will check it now. We're also now breaking and retesting below these lows. So we might see the possible continuation down. Did we have, yeah, we have the PMIs, which are coming improved. So that should be uh bringing, that should bring us more um more equity on the downside for gold. One, two, three, only one, two, three. So just give me a second and I will check with the broker. So now let's see it live, so uh this, if this was the entry over here. This one would be forty pips, fourteen pips. Very likely to be stopped out with the, with the spread, depending on the entry. And uh yeah, we would have the next one going to forty two, still, still to ten and then continuing down, so this one at least would be a win. This one probably would be a loss. Yeah, this one I will leave it over there, because it can be both sides. And the break and retest of these lows will actually end up being a win. Okay, and uh let's see if we have another screenshot of this. Yes, okay, ta, 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 ta. Yeah, that was the sales, yeah, that's also the end of the session. So now let's move on to the last day, which is Friday, the second, NFP day. Let's see uh the, the numbers, so anyway. But that doesn't very slowly, okay, so this is the first candle. And the NFP is coming in improved, more than expected, but much lower than previous one. Unemployment rate uh jumping up, so I think that's not good for the US dollar. So I am expecting a bullish um bullish uh bias. I'm not sure, yeah, where these uh retests will end. This is the last PSA, we have this candle closing. Might take a super high scale one entry over here. Yes, oof, and that's paying, that's paying off. Very good. Next set of buys above these highs. Awesome, yeah, price is staying now above. Yeah, now this one will be a loss. Okay. Possible sales below these lows. Okay. And there was no retest over here, that uh and not, not taking the end of the pullback entry, as I told you. We might take then the further continuation down, especially if we break below these lows now. That's actually, uh that might be great. Yeah, we don't, we are bouncing. We see a bullish push. Looks like the momentum is quite in favor of that, and we might take the enter here. Okay. Yeah, and uh we got a, a loss. Price doesn't have uh enough momentum yet, coming into New York City change opening. And that's okay, let's see if we have now a full correction below the last lows as well. Obviously a continuation bullish. Okay, price is breaking down. We have these last highs. Okay, ten AM candle. Breaking above, oof, sketchy perception, I would say, very, very sketchy. Let's see the last hour uh of Friday. Okay, so we're coming at ten AM, so we are over here, so we have these last highs. And not yet, these last short lows. Ten AM, okay. We are staying above, but there's not a lot of momentum. Yeah. One, two, three. Yeah, not, not enough momentum for us to enter. And yeah, that will be the end of Friday and the end of the week. So uh I hope you guys enjoyed, and I see you next time.